Jesus.
Is Jeff not here, buddy?
No, he's not feeling well.
What? Jeff is...
Jeff's not here, oh, that's good.
Yeah. Oh, he's not feeling well.
Exactly, you can see from the five in the address. He's in the station, what was he doing? I got two.
Yeah, yeah, Jeff. He's pretty excited about it.
I should send him, yeah.
Oh, wow. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
I didn't use the app in Green City. I, I, it did pop off the page to me, I could look through a book. Actually, I thought that was a question right here. Well, what I'm saying is, look through a question, Ben.
In the head, it's taken a lot of time.
Yeah. Should... Don't get them in half the air. Can we talk about that in the second session? Is everybody ready? Are you sure it's suspending?
I don't know. Is that all that they were done?
Oh, no.
No, we got more coming.
Oh, we have more coming?
Yeah.
I was really jealous about who got on the show there.
So, Austin, didn't enjoy the condemnation hearing as much as you would have enjoyed your good day.
Well, no, because it got canceled.
Oh, oh. But I was waiting for it, huh?
Well, the site news, it doesn't happen until the day of jet.
The change should be waiting for three.
Okay.
Anyway, we can't.
But we had this, you told.
Well, I got it for another reason.
Well, I have that like competition tradition, I've had some.
Oh.
He's gonna go get it. But she's like...
And I will email you. She wants to have a...
Well, I have my questions on my inside field. I'm sure G one. Yeah.
Make some noise.
Oh, my goodness. They're gonna be spoiled. These are our favorite.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's this, you want to take it from me?
Ah, yeah, that is smart.
You want it here?
Yeah. Okay, so I have some...
She's Charlie, that's right. Hang on.
I know. That's a bad answer. What produce is that, though?
You just asked about the U C.
Is it that thing? No. I did that, Dave.
No, I did. I asked you.
I just wanna share.
This is a hot thing. Like, yeah. Did you get rid of all of them in the building?
Don't know what it was. And I never remember.
I'm gonna fix it so the, the roof shows up.
I don't know why I started doing that last night. Shouldn't it just be, um...
And this is weird anyway, it's not what you say.
Yeah, but, um...
Oh, that's good. I put on the closed captioning, I forgot to let everyone.
Um, okay.
I'm, I'm muted, right?
All right. Whoever's asking if they're muted, I think they are.
And I would represent the classic, the D M. Rest to be. This, and you, and that, it's exactly.
Oh, thanks.
Yep. That's a, my shoes are backwards in my view. I'm recording it correctly. It's strange, Al.
All right, y'all ready? All right, first off, we've got to finish the hearing. Uh, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. This is a public hearing as part of the municipal condemnation proceeding related to the Main Street Bridge replacement project transportation project project number two, four, one, parentheses, five, eight. The second property of seventy feet, or the Main Street, the hearing was dropped at seven P M on June twenty-fourth. The property owner is given thirty days notice of the hearing via certified panel. The property owner is represented by counsel. The counsel's requested the condemnation hearing be continued until July eighth. Is there anyone who will make a motion, uh, to continue to recess the hearing until seven P M on July eighth? Some move. Second. Dave and, uh, John, Dave, motion Dave, John seconded. Uh, and that'll be here at the bar ground on the flight, uh, community room, ninety-three South, East Street. Some move, second vote, yes. The hearing is recessed until seven P M on July eighth. Uh, twenty twenty-five, thank you for your indulgence, we get to use some people to discuss. Now, we move on to opening the, uh, let's see. Resess hearing. Oh, yeah, I'm eager to say hi.
Hi.
Thank you, the objection, sharing now, motion back. And now we will open up the town with this, uh, for regular meeting. Uh, and we have a roll call, we have all the boards present. And we're going to, we just finished the, uh, condemnation hearing. Set, adjust the agenda. Uh, we have, is there any reason the board wants to set or adjust the agenda?
I'm all set.
All right, uh, John's been adjusted, and with that, we'll adjust it. So Sally, you're, you're, I presume, to talk about the forwards, and, uh, no?
It was them.
Okay. Uh, and, uh, John, please take your time.
Well, just, can people hear with, uh, my... Is it possible to turn it on, or it's not possible?
Sure, it's possible.
Sorry, John, I just, I don't, I can't hear well when I'm right here, so...
I can hear you here.
You can't hear, yeah. It's too loud, it's... Sorry, John.
Turn it off.
I am, John.
We have a temporary recess.
I asked not to take it on.
Turn off here, this is on a ninety-degree day. You've been over a lot.
Well, we can open some doors, but...
Oh, that would be...
I think it's very important to conduct our business that we hear each other. As much as we then might be like, we might smell each other more with the air conditioning off.
Listen, if it gets like that, then turn it back on for a while.
Oh, we can just delay the...
Yeah, yeah. It's too hot to unmute anything. Yes, it's not, it's not...
Well, everybody's...
They're an athlete.
I know. Everybody has to go to the river or the pool.
Are you all seeing the doors?
Again, yeah.
Oh, it's cold.
Just till seven.
Some of it's big, just... It's a squats, Eric. Oh, oh.
Listen, I guess it's just... Yeah, I've had a couple of things here. Something when I, I like to very much. Oh, I see. Things are there.
Well, that is like being hit on the head and then stop.
Yeah, there's sort of a relief.
Yeah.
You didn't know how much it hurt till after I quit.
Yeah.
It's not as hot outside as it was.
Yeah.
I know, but it's gonna be hot enough in here. Uh, maybe we should open that back door and then thus get a little frost threat.
I think it sets off the alarm, the door's outside.
I think it says it does.
All right, that's the theory. We may have to take a recess. Come on, me, let's get this show on the road. Uh, I would like to first offer the opportunity for Carolyn, did you have something to say?
No, she was...
Or was it, did you want John to say it?
I do, I wanted John to say it, but I'll say it. Friday evening, six, that's seven-thirty, in this space, it's gonna be presentations by four Norwich students who are doing research projects this summer. And they're gonna explain about them and show their posters, and it's gonna be very interesting. The kind of research that undergraduates are doing at Norwich.
So Friday at what time?
Six o'clock.
Six to seven.
Friday, from six to seven in the community room, is going to be a presentation of, uh, projects by Norwich graduate students.
Undergraduates.
Undergraduate students.
And there will be cookies.
And there will be cookies.
Mary Lee.
All right, I'm gonna break the... I'm gonna break the agenda and point out to everybody in the back of the room, the mural is finished. And I would like to compliment, uh, Olivia's How, Olivia Howard, Grayson Grayler, Ava Lawless, Brent Bain, Dot Hagan, Sonia McIntyre, America... Couldn't read you right in America, I think it's Waters. Logan Tuck, Cap, another one, I couldn't quite, uh, make the signature out. And of course, they were all directed by Leslie and Ed Sprebe. And I think it's a beautiful, uh, uh, mural, and I think it is just another copy of what, another performance by Leslie with, uh, Art and her students. Any other comments to that?
Thanks.
Okay. Tim Swart, accessibility, walkability, pedestrian safety task force, post-instruction, Cheney Farm, hockey and harking operations.
All right, I will step up to the lecture, but, uh... I, I wanna say that this is not just me speaking, this is a joint initiative of the accessibility, walkability, and pedestrian safety task force. We're not trying, you know, we're, we function together, and this is something we wanted to bring up is to open up to open discussion in the town with the select board. Uh, there's been talk over many years, I know, we know, about the fact that the Cheney Field, which is such a beautiful place, is a hard place for some people to go. People that aren't vigorous hikers. And because there's all the construction happening there, uh, making places for vehicles to go for the, the major construction on the water tanks, and a need for, uh, some maintenance roads, we assume, to be able to service those in the future. We wanted to propose that the, the town consider with input from everybody that's interested. Whether it would make sense to take advantage of this opportunity and make a limited parking area so that people would be able to drive up there rather than just hiking, basically. We have, uh, talked about various ways that the, uh, that area could be controlled, including having it, uh, having a gate that would be open and closed for a daily schedule. Maybe open till dusk or something. Again, these are all open for discussion, this is just throwing out some ideas. Uh, and if necessary, we've, uh, talked about that there could be, uh, solar-powered cameras up there. You can get those that are connect, can connect via cell phones, we understand. If it was felt that more monitoring needed to be, uh, made up there. Um, other things we talked about, and I'm gonna ask the rest of the task force to chime in, because I'm sure I don't remember everything. We've had people point out that there's already several fire pits that are constantly used, various places around the field. And that's, you know, having a place where people could go to more easily might put the, the fire pits, the use of, you know, for cooking and things, uh, actually closer to the road so that if there was a problem, emergency vehicles could get to it. Again, just throwing out a bunch of ideas. We, there would certainly need to be clear signage about not leaving trash and, uh, making it clear that if the area's not taken care of, this, that, that parking area might not stay open. I don't know, fellow task force members, what am I forgetting?
I guess they think it's okay. So, yes, Delancey?
I'll take Mary, but she'd be saying same thing in the morning.
Oh, so to tag on to the idea of the, um, fight people using the fire pits either as supposed to or not, not supposed to, and having access for, um, fire personnel if needed, hopefully. We don't need them, but it'd be nice, but also for, um, hikers, so that if needed, hopefully, we know, an ambulance or some park up there. I think would be good.
Yeah. We hope we don't have any remote rescues that are needed, but...
Well, I think, Tim, yeah, I will, the, uh, you know, the, we wanted to get it on the floor for discussion, because the construction project, that's not gonna be in perpetuity. This is a window of opportunity to make it feel more accessible. And we recognize there are lots of dimensions to that, um, including the hairpin churn on the road, um, you know, some other features of it. But we also, I should add, that we also did talk with the police chief about this and about security, and, uh, and, and some other issues up there. The camera idea was one that came up. We've kicked, you know, we've been kicking around a lot of ideas in terms of seasonal access. And I know the maintenance of that road, the heavier use can be a problem. Um, and so we've also considered, well, maybe it's seasonal, just like the state parks are not open out here. And they necessarily expect the town to plow that.
No.
Tim had mentioned maybe certain times for the day that it opens and closes, but certainly seasonality can be one of those issues. But I think we should lose sight of the fact that the issue here is about making it more accessible to people, because we've heard time and time again how inconvenient it is to have to park downtown. It's, that, that inhibits people from, uh, going up there. And I, I think all of us have gone up there at one point recently. I, I walked from the other side of town over there, because there's no place to park it. Um, you walk up there, and the hike to Cheney Field is, is a hike, right? Uh, let alone getting up there and being able to enjoy it. Not everybody can be running up to the top of the mountain in the trail area. Uh, so I think we just wanted to put that on the table, because that parking area up there is, uh, for the, uh, construction vehicles is, uh, workhorse. It's, it's, and it's there, it's been built. So it's a, it's a, it's a resource that, uh, I think we felt would make it feel more accessible and alleviate some of the issues of parking. Um, and I know there's been problems, all kinds of problems, uh, with folks trying to park on the streets and in that neighborhood to go up there. So this just seemed like the opportunity to, to, uh, put the question on the table while the construction season is going on, but before it ends.
And if I could just piggyback on that, I...
I'm sorry, what's your name, please?
Um, Janan Ham. I hike with, uh, I do this in the barn at Grimes', and that's a really diverse audience. And so parking downtown isn't easy, and so what we end up doing is, and I feel a little bit guilty about it, is parking up in that neighborhood so that some of our, um, older folks or folks with less mobility can join us on the hike. And so I feel like having someplace that would be off the road, not in front of their parking, you know, in front of their houses and in their neighborhood, um, would still allow access to a lot more people. And I just think about my, I now have parents, children. It's like, and my daughter coming up with two under the age of three, to be able to, you know, park somewhere, leave our car, and take strollers up so that they could throw them in the pack. So it's, it's not just, you know, the old folks like me, and we're trying to accommodate, but I feel like the entire community would benefit, and it would get us out of that neighborhood that I always feel a little bit guilty about parking in.
So, that's, that's where we, we're starting, is to find out what other people think.
Dave, are you...
For life forward, but also the rest of the community also.
Well, you had this same idea, Charlie, back in February. Let's take advantage of the construction to build parking. Then we heard some resistance. That's right. Because we have held public meetings before, and the neighborhood was in favor of that, am I correct? In stating that, uh... That's what I would go.
It's more complicated than that, but, no.
Well, I try to simplify things.
I think that proposed par, can I interject?
Sure.
I think that proposed parking area was off of Byam Road.
Right.
Not in the field.
Right.
So this, this...
I think the traffic was the biggest concern I heard from neighbors. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to explore it.
There's somebody else that...
But I'm just saying, our neighborhoods are gonna be... Olivia?
Do we wanna, there's one more public comment.
Oh, please. Uh, for the record, it's Gerard Barnway. I live up on Hill Street, and there are some concerns about particularly that intersection with Hill Street and Byam. You know, you can't really see up the street, you can't see down the street. With more traffic up there, I think the town's gonna have to think about safety issues. That's also a narrow street, and there's no guardrails. I think you're gonna have to think about widening the street or putting in some guardrails, because, um, right now, there's only like six houses up there, and we look out for each other. There's only two up at the top, and there're like four on our street. If somebody's coming down, we wait at the bottom and let them come down. But the other day, I was going up, and no one, no limit stuck for me, so I think you might be very concerned about traffic considering you're here. Um, if you're gonna think about doing anything up there. Also have a very serious concern about the fire pits. I've had issues with fires coming down on my property, which of us, right up here, on the tanks? So I wouldn't encourage putting any fire pits in there, even though you might think it might be better to have them contained.
No.
And the self ones that are up here and then, I think any, any fire up there is unacceptable at any point.
Yeah, I should note that that fire pit thing just kinda came up as an observation.
Right, right, I'm just saying.
Putting fire pits up there.
You know, so you're gonna be thinking about that.
I think it just, it's just that the behavior's already there, it's hard, is it better we police it?
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, just, I wanted to note that as well, as a statement of fact, that in the town forest, fires are not permitted. Um, if you wanted to have a fire in the town forest, I believe there's an option to ask for permission to have a fire, but all of the fires that you see on the town land are illegal.
Okay.
Uh, to my, nobody has asked permission. Uh, the town forest stewardship committee is definitely very aware of that issue and has tried removing signs of fire and, um, seeding over areas to try to encourage people to, to be like, 'cause when you see it there, you think maybe it's allowed.
Yeah.
And so to try to really discourage, and they also put out a lot more signs, and they put one sign like in the most popular spot, and it disappeared in like a week. It was gone.
Was it?
Yeah, it was metal, it was metal, so it wasn't easy to burn. But that's an ongoing, and I think, um, we do not wanna blame Norwich University for all of the fires, but some of the fires have been, um... They, they have had misunderstandings about where the boundaries are, and so in some of their training activities, they've had fires in the town forest, and there's been a lot of effort put into improving those communications.
Yeah.
So hopefully that will continue to improve. I imagine people will always wanna have a fire in a beautiful place, and we will have to address it regularly.
Yes.
Um, and figure out what things are the most effective. So, yeah, that, and also parking on the streets where there's no signs that say no parking is totally allowed. So I know there's sort of like, and there's not a lot of that happening, so it can feel awkward to park on the street. But, um, aside from where there's signs at Byam that say no parking, um, I think that that is permitted, so that's another just factual thing. Um, and I would, the, the feasibility study didn't even explore the feasibility of Cheney for reasons that it was controversial at the time and also expense reasons. And it was kind of assumed that the road, the improvements to the road would be so expensive that it wasn't like the top priority to explore. And I think that what has occurred now has changed the conversation, so I agree that it's a really good time. I hope that we'll have it on the agenda to discuss it more further. 'Cause I think there are, uh, pros and cons...
Yes.
To the placement of it, but I know that if everyone looks at that, um, feasibility study, the suggestion of that retaining wall on Byam, on private property that we don't own, I can only imagine the cost of it, and it would fit like two cars.
Yes.
If there was a way for cars to park on Byam and turn around without turning in people's driveways, I think that would be the best option, in my opinion, 'cause it would mean limited parking, it would mean more visibility and not, you know, up in the field. But I don't know how to make that happen, and I personally believe we have some responsibility to create access for our community to a town resource, so...
You're right.
Sorry, too much for me.
Before you go, there's some things being...
Oh, it's the closed caption. Kinda turned them on, so that...
Oh, okay, yeah, all right.
I know, it, I got me too.
Yeah, okay.
I thought it was like a chat at first.
I did too.
Yeah.
Is there anybody in TV land who wants to, is there any comment there? No. But there is for me.
I'm, I'm not on the TV, but I'm inspired by what Lydia said to just add a little bit more to that. Um, Cheney Field is, is town property, and anyone in this room that has been up there, I think, can agree that the vista from Cheney Field is just, it's, it's special. Um, it's unique, and it's really something, um, that we're fortunate to have access to, but the access to it is not currently equitable. And the idea to just from scratch, go ahead and carve a road up there and bring in a bunch of fill and lay out a parking space, it's totally a non-starter. But as you pointed out, here we are, and the conversation is different now. Um, I really hope that while there are so many legitimate concerns and challenges to this that really need to be explored, I hope that folks will do so with an open mind, because I think it could really be of a benefit to the entire community for more people to have more access up there. And I think it could even draw business from other places for people wanting to get to an accessible place to, um, enjoy the views that we have to offer.
Well, I think the conservation commission said no to the parking space up there. And I don't know where the boundary is, but it seems like that road access that goes along, it goes up to Norwich and then around the quarry, and so on, is Norwich land. it goes up to Norwich and then around the quarry, and so on, is Norwich land. And I don't know what your configuration for the road is, whether it's just go up the wellfields, up to the reservoirs, or are you trying to make a loop? Because that road going down is nasty.
Yeah.
And when it gets wet, it'll be even nastier.
Yes, yes. You're talking about the original road that's down the hill from the line of trees.
Yes.
Yes, yes, I agree that that corner is very steep and looks like it could be a maintenance problem.
Yes.
Looking at the new location of the road that was never discussed, I know, with the town. And appeared to serve to everyone's surprise. I think it looks like that was an attempt to avoid having to make that, use that hairpin turd with the consequent dangers. We haven't, we have not thought about engineering them all with this. We would leave that to the civil engineers to work out. But there's a lot of issues and the feasibility of safe movement and easy maintenance is certainly something that needs to be part of any plan.
Yeah, well, I think you need to get with the Conservation Commission.
Okay.
And we'll reach out to see what's going on. Because they did not recommend it.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Jan.
We can do that.
I think that what John said is that there, I've been sitting here thinking we should have a hearing on this. We should have it on the agenda, and we should have a hearing. But I think before we do that, I think you guys have to meet with the Conservation Commission together. If you met together, who knows what would come out of that meeting? Then ideally, I'd like to believe that you could come up with a compromise and then present it to the board. So I would suggest that you do that. That you reach out to the Conservation Committee and the Town Forest Committee, have a plate of cookies, and sit around and talk about this until, because I have a lot of respect for the expertise you all have developed. And so if you put your heads together and come up with something, I'm very excited to see what that is. So that would be my recommendation. Thank you for bringing it up.
It's gonna be a discussion, and we're gonna, I will say that if we haven't made it, if the decision hasn't been made by the middle of September, it's gonna drop. The ball's gonna be dropped.
That's why we're gonna start.
And there's a great deal of discussion, and have a lot of good ideas, and the neighbors have to be part of this discussion.
Agreed.
If they're not part of the discussion, I'm not gonna entertain anything.
Yes.
So they've all got to be part of that, and hopefully a plan can come up. I think there's iron that's hot that can be used to scrape, and we can do a great thing. I don't live there. I don't know what it's like to, I certainly know Cheney Farm. But I don't know what the traffic is. There's people who are going to be impacted in their front yard, where that's never happened before. So this is a time that we need to get together. We will assist any way we can to facilitate that. And then we're gonna have to get together as a board and decide what we're gonna do. And we may step on some toes, but that's not our goal. Our goal is for everybody to get along. Yes, Ms. Davidson?
During your discussion, I think part of your discussion should be the maintenance of it.
Yes.
You know, the cost, where the money's gonna come from, the whole bit. Because we do a lot in Norfield, and nobody thinks about the maintenance in the future.
Right. And this is, this is, should be a long-term investment, not something that we're gonna turn our backs on after it starts. Agreed.
Another little tidbit is that the GORC grant had funds to increase the parking spaces at Norwich at the Shaw Center.
Yes.
And we were unable to do that due to Norwich not having their stormwater permit up to date.
Oh, really?
And so it's just one of the elements of, we don't have control over a lot of the entry points to the town forest. So that was one of the, the outcomes of the study was encouraging more parking there, but we were unable to do that despite having funds to do it, which was a frustration.
Sure.
And it also doesn't solve the accessibility piece. It just made that. And I think another thing to think about with traffic is the size, the number of spaces that were there would impact the amount of traffic and the way that it was like advertised. If we continue to encourage people to use the Shaw Center as the primary entrance, we had access on Sled Ave for like two cars, and then we lost that trail. So that's another change that's occurred, that we've lost some access that we used to have, may or may not come back because it's gonna be, again, that's Norwich's land, a gigantic expense to fix it, it's not the town's control. But I don't think the two cars, people occasionally going up there to park was causing traffic issues on Sled Ave. So it's all about how we do it, if we were to do it. There are lots and lots of issues to figure out. And thinking, I have to think about Hubbard Park and Montpelier, and that they have some pretty tricky roads up there, very populated neighborhoods. And I think it's mostly seen as a positive for those neighborhoods, though I'm sure they have issues with cars and safety that they have to address.
Yeah. Yes. Okay.
So all kinds of things. People with placards for accessibility limitations may be the only ones that get up there. People with bicycle tracks, put it together, come back to the board.
Okay.
Keep us informed.
Good.
And the deadline is, is what?
Oh, yes.
What is the deadline?
First of September.
So, yeah.
Yes.
You got your work cut out for you for the summer. Well, I think we need to take on some of the effort. Well, I don't, I don't, I want them to talk the roots to talk.
Yes, I think that's great, but we could also invite everybody here to all talk.
We can-
That's correct.
We can certainly facilitate a meeting.
We can.
Charlie, can I ask a related question?
Sorry?
Can I ask a related question? If it's off topic, you can just tell.
No, go ahead.
What's the status with that unauthorized road that was cut across Cheney Field that-
That's gonna be restored to the original condition, I hope, with swales also. That was a construction company did something without town's permission, and that's gonna be restored.
Yeah. They are contractually obligated to restore.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, they have to, they have to put it back.
Who's gonna hold their feet to the fire to do that?
I'm not gonna hold their feet anywhere, I'm gonna hold a paycheck.
Well, Charlie, just like to point out the Conservation Business Meeting tomorrow night in this room. Okay, Stephanie, what do you want to come?
Thank you, Jan.
Well, you just stored my thunder, Ken, I had that on my list.
Good for you, Ken. All right, no, for this discussion, we, is there any other stuff? Anybody from the audience? TV land? Okay, thanks very much. Next item on the agenda is Sherri Tucker. Is Sherri Tucker online? Is Sherri Tucker in the audience? Does the board want to discuss the $600,000 offer for 100 years' worth of sand? Hearing no discussion. We have no representation from our E-Tucker. And someone closer to the TV make sure that I'm not skipping anybody off. I see us.
I don't see anybody, I don't know. I think they can unmute if they want to, but they can definitely enter in the chat if they want to be recognized.
Did they request to be on the agenda?
Yeah.
That's what the email said.
And did we notify them that they were?
I don't know.
Yeah.
So they may have.
I did not.
So.
Okay, well, we-
If they're putting it on our future agenda, can we also request to hear from Carl Bailey about, you know, yeah, information from the manager?
Well, we'll see what their presentation is and ask, and I presume public participation, this is an offer. I think the, was me, I would, as the manager, go through all the research and ask all those questions before it came to the board, and it would make public participation. So we've got, that, this has been asked before, and that is exactly what the manager was instructed to do. All right, so managers got some work to do on this? I didn't realize that. Manager do a, what's the term we use for that? That would be- Due diligence. Cost benefit. Yeah. I do know that Rain Tree was interested in that pit, but aren't anymore because it was a $200,000 fee to put a rebel across it. $200, $200,000 cost. But the owner is in here, and we will entertain the next item on the agenda, which is liquor control permission. Liquor license renewal for Northfield Country Club. How do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. A motion to second to approve Northfield Country Club liquor license renewal? That's gotta say, Dave.
I have none.
I don't have any either, thank you.
So for a while, we weren't getting these forms for DLC, and now we are. I mean, that's what I was wondering myself. Okay, so I have- We were told we wouldn't be getting them. Right, all right. All in favor of approving the Northfield, is there any further discussion? I'm sorry. All in favor of approving the Northfield Country Club liquor license? Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And is there any objections or abstentions? I should have put these both on the same discussion. May I have a motion to approve the Northfield Country Club outside consumption permit? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the outside consumption permit for Northfield Country Club, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections or abstentions? Hearing none, the outside consumption permit for Northfield Country Club has been approved. Approval of minutes, do I have a motion to approve the 10th of June minutes?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion about the 10th of June minutes? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the 10th of June-
Wait, 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 wait.
Sorry?
That guy's just looking.
I know, I didn't see any hand scratching on, pen scratching on your minutes, so I figured that was safe.
You're pretty good, you're pretty right.
You good?
That's fine, yeah.
All right. All in favor of approving the June 10 minutes, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections or abstentions? June 10 minutes have been approved. Special meeting for June 16th, that I applaud the board for doing that and taking time out of your day since we had a scheduling conflict. Is there a motion to approve the June 16th minutes? So moved.
Second.
First and second minutes, a motion, is there any discussion?
I just have a question, Charlie. Did you, when you said that the municipality had a construction project on East Street, did you say a few years ago that closed down the street? Or were you talking about the recent closure of the street?
Recent, recent closure.
It's not a huge deal, but it, it was-
I thought you meant the sidewalk project a few years ago.
Ah, I think you were talking about just like the last couple weeks it was closed.
The water project was closed for two days.
I've got this, though.
Okay, yeah, that's all.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of June 16th, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
The minutes of June 16th have been approved. Next thing is, do we have a motion to approve warrant 24-25 and 24-25 CF for a total of, a warrant for a total of $735,729.99. So moved.
Second.
Discussion, Dave, all set? David?
I don't know that any people will be able to answer, but I was wondering on page six about what warming was needed at the Memorial Park bathroom.
I wanted to know about that.
Because I just was curious if there was a vandalism issue or-
It'll be right in there.
Well, yeah, and I can ask again. I also was wanting to check on what we have set up for cleaning those bathrooms this year, because that's been an issue, especially when the pool staff isn't around. But it hasn't been, it's okay, it's not-
Well, let me just practice.
Okay.
See if I can find it.
Yeah. I know, I hope not.
Delary's Plumbing. I can't answer your question.
Okay. Yeah, I asked, I wanted to know that too, because we had some, we had some vandalism there once.
We have, yeah.
So how do we find out what happened?
Make a note of it, and we'll bring it up. Hopefully it'll be in the manager's report for the next meeting.
Okay, so did you make an, you make an note?
I will make a note to check with Jeff and make sure that we all get moved in. That's the next thing.
Thank you very much. So I will write a page on that.
Anything else, Olivia?
That's it.
John?
On page four, all the builder damage. Seems like we spent $3,500 to get it fixed two weeks ago. Now we got another $3,000 bill. I wanna know what happened to the order.
All right, well, John, you know I can't answer that one.
I know.
We'll have to put that on a list too. So we've got Delary's Plumbing and-
All the builder- Somebody spent $600 to get it out of whatever, wherever it was.
You said you were on page-
Four.
Four.
Page four, and what's the line on it? We got Sunell, Marshall Tire Group business.
No, I'm on Marshall Tire Group.
Marshall Tire.
Isn't that Joe?
There was a tire change purchase for where?
I'm pretty certain I saw a Marshall Tire invoice in there when I was going through the invoices earlier. As Ken said, they're for chains from winter. When did he say that? Two seconds ago.
He says change, sometimes they stuck up during the summertime when prices are lower.
That's what he said in the past. All right. I don't know. Well, we need clarification. We'll clarify.
Yep, on page nine, there's a cabinet loan payment, and I wanted to know what that was.
Oh, is that the grant that Darn Tough has? And it's like one that gets funneled through the town? So it shows up one here sometimes.
I would think so. All right, is there any paper on that? That's from Bepso, right? No, yeah, it is.
What page is it, John? Nine, is that?
Page nine, first item.
Sanders Loan Build Customer-
Yeah, the Sanders Loan, that's what it is.
It's been on the warrant at least three times.
Yeah, it's an ongoing.
What's the value on that? Bepso's is an easy one because it's, page 6925, and it is the 2024 B-Rap Loan Cabinet Overdue Notice.
I want to know in general why the page numbers stopped halfway through. There's no page numbers after page seventeen.
Tori, yeah?
I think it's when it's-
After page seventeen just stopped?
Yeah.
So, I mean-
It starts over, it's the health stuff.
Yeah.
It's the HRA stuff, and it's like its own separate report.
Okay, so it starts all over on page one or something else?
Yeah, they're all like their own thing.
Yeah, Lori said she couldn't figure out how to put it all on a page or something.
We were trying to figure out how to get it consolidated, because it obviously eats paper.
No, I just can't understand things. And I also don't understand on page four, just where John was asking questions. We're paying another $120 for image transfer fee for the bridge cameras. And I asked for a cost benefit analysis even before last, so about a month ago. I asked for a cost benefit analysis, we never got one. I'd like to have a cost benefit analysis in- I'd like to have a cost benefit analysis and then I'd like to have a discussion. So that we can talk about why are we spending any more money on this? Are we going to, are, are we going to? Maybe we'll continue. You said once, if we got one, it would be a good payout.
It could, if it was like they smashed it like they did Williamsville last year, you know?
Yeah, we could, if we get the money, if we ask them to.
No worries.
Yeah, no, I wasn't being entirely serious.
That's why we do a cost benefit analysis. So I want to have that. So that I can make a decision about how I feel about this. And I feel kind of personally involved. Because I was the one who wanted the dang cameras on there in the first place. And so, you know, maybe it wasn't such a great idea, is what I'm beginning to think. And the other thing I'm starting to think is, oh gee, they have solar powered cameras now? I got your notes. I read the notes from your meetings and I saw there was solar pop. So I looked them up and they're quite inexpensive. And so I'm wondering if those could be, maybe that's what we should do. But again, without a cost benefit analysis, we have no way of knowing. And then finally, my colleague here, John, says we're going to get some headache bars. And, um, but then I, my other colleague here says, well, we probably have to wait until after we have the, um, fixing of the covered bridges. Cause you can't have headache bars and then have your craft people or your truck drivers, you know, getting headaches, coming back and forth. So we have to wait. So I just think we need to put this on and talk about it, that's all.
Okay.
So if we can make that an, an agenda item and get a cost benefit analysis that we can have and end, and, and inform decision.
So we will, we will ask for a cost benefit analysis from a different, uh, product.
Yeah.
Do a comparison between the solar power and, uh, the, uh, are they hardwired now, the covered bridges?
I don't know, there's something amount of batteries involved. And I think it's a bunch of things.
Batteries and seventy-five dollars.
They've already figured out a way they could make it work better.
Let's just see if we can clean up or act on it protecting the covered bridges.
Yeah.
They're hunting cameras.
Well, and the other issue was that it's really difficult to actually get a photograph of the particular vehicle causing the crash. And, you know, identifying information. And then the second part that's really hard is getting our insurance to actually pay out. So it's not just the cameras that are part of our challenge. There's a lot of different issues.
Cause the, the manager stated there has been no money collected today.
Yeah.
For damages.
And they are hunting cameras, but, uh, the hunting, uh, the cameras I looked up that were solar cameras were hunting cameras also.
Yeah.
And, um, I asked a hunter who recommended this variety. And, uh, the hunter said, you know, I think you can see the whiskers on the critters. I mean, it's that good. So, um, you know, maybe we need to do something better than we're doing.
Okay. Cost benefit analysis, comparison on cameras. Is there anything else on the warrant?
No, there was nothing else, thank you.
Alright, uh, if there's no further discussion, then I will just add on the reason that the headache bars for the covered bridges are probably not going to happen before the covered bridges are rebuilt in '29. All three covered bridges are slated to be rebuilt in '29. If you put up a headache bar, that means you've got to take it down. And, uh, hopefully the design will, that cost will be included in the covered bridge project. I don't know that. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor of approving warrant 2425, 24-25 C through F for total of $735,729.99? Indicate by saying?
Aye.
Aye.
The warrant passed. Do I have a motion to approve the warrant 0126A? For a total of $44,675.88? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion about paying, uh, the state of Vermont to be holding the loan bond? Hearing none. All in favor of approving warrant 0126A? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any objections or abstentions? Hearing none. Warrant 125A has passed. At least we have the payroll. Do I have a motion to receive the filing for the payroll through June 8th? For $113,520.63?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor of approving the payroll indicated by saying aye?
Aye.
Objection, total section, payroll receiving the payroll that's already been paid has passed. Miniscule condemnation of seventy-three, uh, North Main Street has been in recessed until 8th of Ju- of July. Next item on the agenda is approval of public participation procedures. We essentially put references to state law for these procedures. They are not a policy, this is a procedure. Does the board have, uh, is there a motion to approve the procedures as they've been changed?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, is there any discussion?
Yes, what are the changes from the current?
Uh, they, they include Vermont State annotation, Vermont State, um.
We also got rid of village trustees.
That's it, right? And we got rid of trustees.
But other than that, there's no changes to it.
Alright, very good.
Any further discussion? All in favor of approving, uh, procedures for public participation as presented? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Change in procedures for public participation has been approved. And the next thing is tree issue on 1257 Route, Vermont Route 12. Uh, we got a, this has been escalated outside of the managers because of a, uh, I think it was a year, three-year-long process where a tree on round 12 has been causing, uh, power outages. My understanding is that there's been a schedule to have the offending tree branches removed. I talked to the property owner who seemed that he would prefer that method of approaching the select board rather than coming in person. And I looked at the situation and it is a huge tree on round 12. I think there's five good-sized stems coming out of one root wall. One overhangs his house. The rest of them are in the highway. There is sign, there is broken branches that I could not lift. They were 12, 15 feet long, eight inches in diameter, that came down over the winter, knocking out power lines and are still remaining, uh, on his property. They haven't been picked up. This is a state highway. Historically, I, I know that in the past, if there was a tree that was interrupt, it was affecting the reliability of electricity. It was a danger to the traveling public. And the property owner agreed they could split it three ways. So the electric department would pay a third, the highway would pay a third. This is, and then the property owner would pay a third. This is a state highway. So we have to get District 6 involved. And that was, I was then going to turn to the manager and say, have we done that? I don't know if we've done that. But that is what I'm hoping we can do for this individual before snow falls.
So are these in fact Northfield electric power lines?
There.
Where exactly is this location?
It's right af- it's the, sort of the Baptist church in South Village. And you go through the retaining wall. And I think it's the first house after that retaining wall on the east side, around 12 going south. But Dave, you won't miss a tree. It's a big tree over there.
Yeah. Now, my, my only question is, at Northfield Utility, uh, pull?
Yes, it is at Northfield Electric.
It says on the back that it, that there's going to be a scheduled tree trimming.
Right. I'm hoping that the manager will schedule that in conjunction with District 6 participating in the removal.
The whole tree, right?
Right. But if you, the company that's going to do the tree trimming is also the company that's going to remove the tree. It's snapping turtle. So hopefully we can make something happen that benefits the traveling public, the people on the reliability for the electric department. And the side effect is the owner gets the tree out. I'm hoping.
So what's the follow-up to the, uh, person?
I, I will contact the person after I find out what the, whether District 6 is going to participate in this or not. Or if it's, uh, it's, I think he quoted, it's the full is $4,500. Divide it three ways, you've got a win-win.
Are you coordinating with Jeff though? Cause it seems like he's already responded.
Yes. Now, I'm not taking over anybody's job.
Okay.
I will respond.
Yeah.
To the idea.
Yeah.
That it's a three-way split to remove that tree. He knows, he knows I'm going to let him know what's going to happen, what's going to happen. He's not going to get lost in the abyss for three years again.
Yeah.
That's the frustrating part.
Yeah, but it's a little complicated because we're not in the business of just removing trees that people find to be a nuisance, that.
Not removing, but certainly keeping the public's clear.
That is definitely our job.
That's our job. And I saw an opportunity that maybe could be beneficial for everybody. Alright, uh, and then let's play the chat in this. Here's, uh, that's, any further discussion about the tree removal? Hearing none. There's no action item for us on that. That was a four-year information. Next item is board members' comments concerns. Dave, what are you concerned about or what questions do you have?
I'm all set, thank you.
Lydia?
Well, first, I just want to let you all know that I am going on vacation July 1st through the 8th. So I will miss our next select board meeting, um, as I will be traveling on that day. So I can't even zoom in.
Well, don't worry. We'll sign you all kinds of commitments while you're gone.
Yes. We nominated you for everything.
And maybe you'll get poured on at another site visit.
Well, how'd you get out of that one?
Um, then next, I wanted to mention that Jeffrey Farrell, who is the consultant we've been working for on the transit-oriented development, is coming next week to present at the planning commission's meeting. And he would really like as many select board members to attend as possible. Because it is, he was trying to decide between whose meeting to come to. Um, and they had the meeting at the date that worked. Um, but he's going to be talking about form-based code and what it is, and answering people's questions around form-based code. And the potential for the code, he, they do not have the code drafted for us yet. So this is really like a learning, how does it work? And an opportunity for the public to ask lots of questions. So the, it's 6:30 meeting?
Yes.
Next Tuesday.
That's the first.
July 1st.
July 1st, okay.
And I believe Jeffrey Farrell, Farrell's coming on the 30th. So if anybody wants to talk to him for some other reason, he'll be here on the afternoon of the 30th and throughout the day on the 1st.
Very good. It's no problem.
And then there will be several more iterations when they actually have a draft of the code. And then a couple of different opportunities for the public to ask specific questions about the drafts, get questions answered, um, before there's any conversations of do we want to adopt it or not?
Is this gonna be here at BPL?
Yeah, I think the planning commission needs, uh, to hear.
And what time is the meeting?
6:30.
Okay.
There will be remote access.
Thank you.
Very good.
Um.
Will that be warned?
Of course, yeah, it's their regular meeting.
So I can probably remind you.
Oh, yes, it, it will be warned in all the familiar places. Although I would do, I was thinking I was going to ask Jeff or somebody at the town could do some extra advertising. Cause it's when we have a consultant flying up for the day.
You should probably, you should probably send them to me.
We want to make the most of it and get people here so that they get the chance to.
Really, tell them?
Yeah, tell me. I will make a note to remember to do that. Um, then the other thing, you guys probably already saw this, but there's, uh, Vermont League of Cities and Towns is hosting the Central Vermont Region Select Board meetup July 17th, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Senior Center Montpelier. If you have to register for, I've never been to one of those, but, so I'm planning to attend, um, and meet other select board members from the region. And then the other event, I see Caitlin had the flyer, is the, um, VCRD Vermont Community Leadership Summit. That is August 11th at, I always call it BTC Vermont Tech. And now it's like Vermont State University at Randolph Center, whatever you want to call it. She's there.
Whatever you want to call it.
Um, and it's a really awesome day, if you haven't been, I would suggest it. To the audience and the board members. That's all.
Well, I never know good things, but you can't answer.
You never know, John.
Alright, the Coleman survey.
You're right.
The Turkey Hill.
You're right.
Has that been finished?
It has not. It has not been finished, John. I made an inquiry yesterday. It has not been finished.
The crosswalk is not finished either.
I know that.
Oh, well, that's the state, that's not us.
That's the state.
Yeah.
We've got that one right here.
We paint these, but the state paints the one in the faults, because that's not town highway. So we can't, I think Jeff was going to offer to them. If you can't do it.
I think that's a good idea.
Would, will you let us do it?
Cause they're not going to send a paint crew over here.
For one, I know.
Second. Then I saw the bridge sign for Stony Brook Bridge. And I think there needs to be another one right at the bridge.
I'll look.
There is.
Right, but it is on Stony Brook?
Yes, it is on Stony Brook.
Good.
And if you see past the lost dog signs that have been up there for six months. Anyway.
I was thinking one on, uh, on the top of Stony Brook and Smith, on the other end of Smith Hill would be a good location, so they've got one both coming and going.
Didn't we ask for two? Is there only one?
Oh, I have to, I didn't notice the sign. When did you notice?
Today and yesterday.
Okay. Well, I wasn't off the hill yesterday and today was hard to find. You might have elsewhere.
Okay. The brush hog that went down 12A needs to go further between Stony Brook.
And the golf course.
And the golf course.
You noticed that? That was done by a brush hog?
I don't know what it was. I think it's one of the ones on, on our, right?
Right.
Close that moment. But that, isn't that state?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, it is, but the neighbors on Stony Brook have been whacking it down because the state, I think because the dog rivers right there doesn't want to use the brush hog to throw the, not weed into the river. So I think it was Donnie Dubois that did that.
Could be, I don't know.
It was a hand job on the north side of, right in the bridge. And I don't know, it was a machine job on the other one.
I noticed that they.
Stopped.
Mowed the, on 12A between what used to be Tyner's House. And that place that burned down, but I don't.
Maybe they were there. I did see the motors up there, but they're on Luger Lane.
I don't know. But anyway, from the bridge.
Right. Uh, visibility at Stony Brook on 12A?
Yes, especially in my DRC.
Or Cassie's car.
It's a hazard.
I'm driving on that spot.
So other than that, I don't have anything to write to more.
Dave?
Mary?
Yeah. First of all, thank you Carolyn and John for stealing my thunder. I was going to talk about that. That, but I want people to come and see this. It sounds like, kind of like a collegiate science fair. So I'm, I, I think that I'm looking forward to that too. I hope I can come. And, um, I asked about the bridges, so that's done already. I would like to report that I have heard good things about the pool. That the pool is so well attended during this hot weather that the cars were parked down on King Street. And the, the lower parking level was full and the upper parking level was full. And the pool was full. And then Norwich came up and discharged 45 kids from their buses. So there were a lot of people at the pool. A lot of people are signing their kidlings up for two sessions of swimming lessons. And I think we did a good thing, so I'm glad that we did that. I just wanted to let you know. I just wanted to let you know that I'm hearing good stuff about that. I also, I also want her to know, I also wanted to know, how long is that laundromat gonna sit there and be empty and not get to, get taken down? You know?
What is the, what is the, uh?
Well, here was what we, you remember, we all got letters from, copies of a letter from a gentleman who felt that he had been wrongly excluded from, from communications with town manager about the bid process. Do you remember this? Oh, yeah. Well, we all got letters.
What, via what? Email?
Yeah, no, I think they were, yes.
It was, it was Northfield website. I don't think that, so the vendor complained that, first off, he said
Just to the chair and the vice chair? Because I don't recall her saying that.
Maybe that's true.
Well, actually, it was to the manager to be copied. And I followed up to the manager and said, what's this about? And they got it corrected on, they made, one of the vendors made the offer for the purpose of asbestos removal, but they were both certified in doing that. And I don't know what happened after that, other than that I know Jeff was made aware of that opportunity. Then an email went out to all vendors excluding this particular vendor that updated the process for this project to raise, no, you didn't get, you didn't get that. So it was copied, it was to Jeff, copied to us. And it was that the bid process was incomplete, that they weren't included on. Jeff responded to, and he corrected that, and everybody's on the same page for bidding on that. I have not heard, so that's the reason why it's still up there.
So I'd like to have that, like, he has all those things that he'd like to ask the town manager.
Running out of paper here.
Yeah, I know. I can give you some, or, you know, the back or something?
I think I got your back.
Oh, okay. So I would like to have that also be on the town manager's radar screen. I'd like to know when that's coming down.
Well, the RFPs have been received. He's reviewing them now. That's the situation.
The RFPs have been received?
Yeah, the deadline was last week, I believe.
Okay, so.
He's reviewing them now.
I hope it happens soon.
Thank you, Cam.
Thank you very much. And then I'd also like to have an update on what's happening with that house on Bailey Road that they were going to burn down.
Does anybody want to speak to that?
The DRB, I read the minutes. The DRB said to go ahead, right? And then people would still, they could still appeal to a higher...
And we're waiting, and we have to give a 30-day, uh, like 38-day for, for appeals. And...
Appeal was made.
No, a different appeal. They, they've already resolved the first, I don't know what it was called, the request to have...
Objection.
Yeah. This would be an appeal to a Vermont State Court, environmental court?
Okay, well, we'll find out and get that response to you. Glad Mitch tells what's going on.
Okay, and a couple of things about the Cross Brothers Dam. I, I, we all got, members of the board, we all got this, this thing, we all got this thing.
Schematic.
Is, is that, it's called a schematic? Well, if you will note, the, now the exit plan is, they're gonna go out through the south side of Dollar General. Doesn't it look that way this time?
It does look like that.
Yes, and that is, in fact, where we wanted to have the Section D of the, of the Riverwalk dam. So it looks like they're doing it the way we want them to do it. And that's what I'm trying to tell you here.
Mike?
And, and also that I wanted to note that it was at the, the, it was at the Riverwalk meeting in May that we heard about the concerns for the bats. It was quite a while ago.
Does everybody understand the bat concern?
It wasn't, it wasn't at the 11th hour. It was quite a while ago.
One second. So are you ready, are you ready to start?
Because the project's been going for a couple of years.
Are you gonna continue with your mentioning the kiosk?
Yeah, I guess I could. So Charlie and I have talked a lot about, and I've talked to Gail Hall, who is the person who's been pushing for this, about putting the kiosk where, on Section D. Now that we own it, it's ours. And let's never, ever, ever put that kiosk anyplace else except on land we own. And so Charlie has said that he thought we could put a foundation under this kiosk and put it with a forklift right at the, basically at the entrance of Section D of the proposed Riverwalk, Riverpath.
There is a handicap accessibility, there is a curb cutout there by 12 feet. It's the beginning of the bridge going on the east side going south, or the end of the bridge on the east side going north. And that might be a good place for the kiosk, but obviously, if there's trucks coming in and out of there, maybe we hold off until after.
After the van going in and out.
It's just a, just a suggestion that as we are thinking about this, it could be, it's not my idea. I don't know where she thinks, she came up with the idea.
No, you came up with the idea of putting it on a forklift. I had the idea when I was driving by, and I went ding ding, there's the land we own.
Can we just have Jeff talk to the bus people and make sure they think that?
Friday's meeting, we had, we asked him for that, to get the requirements from Re Mountain Transit on what they need for clearance, because it is on Main Street, on the Main Street Bridge at the crossing line. So, yes, we've asked him to get that in place.
But if they needed to pull, if they couldn't be on the bridge, could it be further towards Dollar General, and we just need a new curb cut or something?
Could it be in our right-of-way? We'll find out.
Yeah.
They've got a new pole that they're going to graze the power lines for the purpose of this bridge project. The old pole with the plank, the power lines are attached to now is gonna go away. So that one large pole and that real estate, I, I think there's a fit there if the access to the, the bus is possible there without people rehiding the bus. That would be my concern. Anything else, Mary?
No, that was it.
Okay, half the agenda was that we had two tragedies in Northfield. One was we, the project wiped out the flowerbed in front of the Northfield Savings Bank. I think I sent you a...
I sent you the picture.
I sent you a picture. And that was really bad. Since then, I received a very clear and concise letter from the chairman of our volunteer group that does these flowers, how disappointing and gut-wrenching and a kick in the gut it is to spend $500 of town money to put into a spot that Spike Lands was going to be disrupted. And that was, and the hydrants there today, and it was, it is. You can't deny it. Go out on a day like today planting flowers, because they don't do it when it's cool. They do it when it's sunny and warm. And we, and I responded to the best of my ability to the chairman, and Sally's here right now, that it was not a pleasant discovery or a, really, someday, I would like to have a project go without a scandal.
So are you saying they, they knew they would have to dig up that area, and it just didn't get communicated? Or was it a surprise?
If it's a surprise, then, then you make arrangements.
Yeah.
That, I find it hard to be a surprise
Well, yeah.
to be putting in a hydrant. That's a, that's an engineered plant.
Yeah.
And that's so you can connect, so you can install water?
Will they be, the company be compensating for the plants they kill?
Unfortunately, we don't know that, but I, I, I'm not aware of any compensation that's been discussed.
It seems like if they dug up plants without offering an opportunity.
And then, and then the ladies immediately responded and found a plot of earth behind the savings bank and replanted the, so they wouldn't, to save, kill the plants.
Because they would dug up, poured on a pile of dirt, and left
I saw it.
in the middle of the day.
I did take a picture.
And that was not town money, by the way. It was Northfield Savings Bank money, the $500.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yes. Savings Bank money, yes.
So the savings bank got some plants.
Pardon?
They got some, they got some plants. Makes sense that you put it back in the back there.
Well, no, they're doing it temporarily. That's saved on playing with dirt.
It's a communication fiasco.
So many. Gd field, others?
So we have, I think I've expressed, knowing that you guys had seen the images, and I don't remember a lot of dialogue going back, other than saying, uh-oh, that I've expressed our frustration as well as equally with that, with those ladies. The second thing that didn't make it into the agenda was, or manager's report, I should say. This is not an agenda item. This is a manager's report item, was Margaret Hollenian had a work done in front of it when they took the service, restored the service line after they put the new water main in. They didn't quietly, quite get the compaction correctly for the sewer line to be, to remain buried level. So when they put new soil on the sewer line, it collapsed the soil, it made the sewer line do this. Well, water doesn't flow like that. So with a house with an inn full of people, the sewer backed up, filled the basement. And it was, and it was on a Saturday. Guess how many members responded to that? Zero. Guess how many town crew responded to that? Jeff responded to it, and so did Jim Russo, contacted the contractor who responded. I think it was identified at some time close to midday. By 4 o'clock, crew was in there getting it right, and Jeff had contacted a service pro contractor who cleans up that kind of mess in your basement.
You've had that get for him?
Yeah.
Slated out of you.
And so that was something that didn't make it into the manager's report. Everything else I have to say is going to be executive session stuff. It's going to be about personnel. It's going to be about contracts. No, it'll be legal. And is there any discussion from the public? Sally?
I only have one question. Was that hydrant in the plan?
Well, we could find that out very simply.
I would be surprised if it wasn't, Sally, but I don't know. I don't, I've never looked at the plans. But that's why you have plans. I do not think it is that, that suddenly they realize that we need to put an hydrant there, because that's called a change order. And change orders come with many zeros to deal with. They're expensive, especially when you're excavating onto other people's lands. That's, I think, on the margin of our town right-of-way. So the, I can't answer your question, but I would these following statements. That's the reason you have plans, you have engineers design the plans, you have a contractor follow the plans. And if there's a change order, that's how the company makes their money. And we have not, I have not heard of any change orders today, except for the dates of the project.
I know this is hindsight, but a phone call would have been all it would have taken. So, thank you.
Sorry about that. Is there anybody else in the audience or in, on the streaming audience that have anything to say? We've got some text there that I cannot read.
That's, I asked about that.
On the right-hand side?
Oh, on the right-hand side, yeah.
Oh, it's the AI
Insurance.
that is taking minutes of our meeting.
Very well. Anybody else? Saying that, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
I'm gonna take a second, short break.
Second, and we'll take a five-minute break, a 10-minute break to put up chairs and walk outside where it's cold.
Charlie, I'm sorry, what was the personnel and legal?
Personnel and legal. And, yes, that's personnel, and that's personnel, personnel, and then we have legal. And we're calling, and we're inviting Nick Lady to attend. With legal.
Okay. I'll have to stop the right of the meeting and start up the executive session. I said, so does the court, but Tom, so they're plucking it every once.
What was that, Cam? I didn't hear you.
Tom Davis, he's got that little AI bot and...
I saw you.
It restarted, it seems like it restarted the recording at the time, huh?
Yeah.
That thing will restart.
There is a meeting here tomorrow.
Oh, that's right, there is. Yeah, you can leave this here.